... flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening.
First on the agenda tonight?
Smithy's Package Store.
Yeah, oh, I thought you had not, yes. Hearing from Smithy's Package Store for Alteration of the Business. Mr. Carey?
I'm Ken Carey, and I represent the In-For Businesses Smithy's Package Store. The petition is for the alteration of premises specifically to actually build, construct a new building immediately behind the present building on the same location. And I think we've provided a packet with that information and the plan and so forth. So that's what we're requesting.
Board have any questions? I do. Go ahead.
I just, I'm looking at the layout plan here. As someone who's driven through that area a number of times, it's, it's pretty tricky as it is. You have the Harley shop on one side, within a short distance is obviously almost across the street is their entrance, and then you have the Big Y Pharmacy entrance there. And I was just wondering, Ed, what do you think of that flow and whatnot?
There's a lot of traffic, too.
A lot of cross-traffic.
But I'm sure you're going to have to resubmit to Mass Highway or DOT, which is called now your access approvals.
Okay.
I don't know what part, what, what part you are at right now. Are you in the preliminary part? Are you?
Kind of preliminary stage.
Because you're gonna have to talk to Mass Highway because you're alternating, you're gonna be changing the, your egress into there, and they might require some deceleration or acceleration lanes entering and exiting like they did for Harley-Davidson, and they also did for Big Y and also Red Rock Plaza. So make sure you see what, see them because if, because they have the ability to stop it, and you need to do your permits. But they're gonna probably ask for, you know, they have the traffic council there, and there's a lot of traffic in front of that establishment. But I concur with David there, especially when Harley-Davidson has their weekend events, it can get kind of tricky there with funneling that traffic down, so. It's not my jurisdiction as a highway superintendent, and we don't have jurisdiction on those particular permits, but Mass Highway does. And I think they're, and they have a traffic engineer will review them, Dave. But it is a tricky area to come in and out, especially when there's events at Harley-Davidson and that, because you're, you're funneling quite a bit of traffic from those two plazas down that road, so.
Solid answer.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you do that because they'll come to me and ask me for input.
Okay.
And my input would be to evaluate it, because you have another driveway right next to it for the pharmacy. Okay?
Yeah.
That would be my concern, Dave.
Yeah. And I guess my other question was, when do you expect to really sort of break ground? Is this something for the spring, or is this something you're shooting for the fall? Do you know?
As soon as this goes to ADCC and we hear okay from them.
Okay.
So hopefully it will be by beginning of next year. I think it does take at least a month or two once it goes to ADCC.
Okay. Do you anticipate any variances required from the zoning board?
Yeah, that's all done.
It's all done?
Yes.
Okay, and it's been positive or negative or positive?
Positive, yes.
Okay. And may I ask, what was, what was the variance change?
Have we do the setback?
From properties?
Right.
From the highway or from the sides?
From the highway.
Highway is 75 percent.
Are you going to have any problem with Big Y? I know you have a sewer connection there.
Yeah.
You're still gonna maintain that sewer connection?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
They want to make a motion concerning the-
Can I ask something? The traffic concern that you have, is it during the construction or is it-
No, after it's built.
Oh.
After it's built.
There are the motorcycles, I mean, as a rider myself, I've seen accidents there with motorcycles.
But, I mean, the way we have store, right, it's not that we are building a new store, it's already there.
You're not, but your parking lot only handles about maybe eight or nine cars right now. How many parking spaces do you anticipate in the future?
It's going to be about 20 parking spaces.
It's gonna double it.
Double.
It's gonna double it, and they're gonna look at that. Okay? And they might tell you that your current openings are not big enough, you might have to go to 20 feet. They might not like them as close to where they are now from the pharmacy. Those are questions that we'll ask you, and they want to make sure there's plenty of sight distance, and they also want to make sure if somebody's coming down at the speed limit, that he can decelerate without, you know, causing a problem with traffic, with traffic behind him or in front of him. That's the things that they're there for, but that's part of the permit process. And it's, you, you don't deal with the town on that one because you're on Mass, on Mass Highway's property, so you have to go to the DOT, which is in King Street in Northampton.
Right.
Okay?
And your signage is all gonna be to code as well, I would assume? Your signage will all be to code as well?
Yeah.
It's gonna stay like this.
Advertising signs.
Yeah, I think it is going to stay like this.
Okay. All right, cool. Good luck.
So if somebody wants to make a motion concerning, the application for Alteration of the liquor business?
So move.
Approval of that application?
Second.
Second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So our next one is 650.
Do it here in a minute. There is a warrant.
I want to read that.
Okay. It's a, it's a bill warrant, 1310, total of $141,500, excuse me, $857.79.
Do I hear him, Ed's abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
So do I hear a motion?
Motion to sign.
I'll make a motion to sign.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ed's abstaining.
I do it.
I was like-
I'm sorry.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to do something like, wasn't sure.
We could like to go back. We have some minutes in this agenda, and we have minutes from last time that we didn't get to, because the meeting went so long. Which do you prefer to do?
Just, I would keep doing minutes if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
This, this, off of this agenda, there's minutes in your package tonight, and there were minutes in your package last week.
I brought the minutes from the last week into this package, so you didn't have to-
Oh, we don't have to go back?
Yeah, it's all in the same, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So those minutes from April 10th, I was-
All right, so the executive session ones we can't?
Correct.
We can't do now?
We gotta do those in executive. Okay.
So the first one I see, executive session, executive session.
August 7th.
What is it?
August 7th.
August 7th, regular.
What, what's the page number?
Twenty-two.
How much?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
That's August.
August 7th?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's an executive session too, isn't it?
One's regular, one's executive.
Oh, okay, all right.
First one's regular.
All right.
First one's regular, on 20, right?
Wait a minute.
Oh, I'm in good reader.
What's that?
I'm in a different program.
Twenty, it looks like the regular meeting, but it talks about executive session.
Yeah.
Same thing for the 22nd, talks more-
The 22nd looks like a regular session.
We should, we need to isolate those ready, so what?
Yeah, but it talks about executive session, the 630.
They need to be broken out as separate minutes so that we can vote one and not do-
No, they are, they're-
They're just motions.
Regular, it's just telling you that you went into executive.
It's not the minutes themselves.
Okay.
So I would move to approve the minutes from August 7th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And what's your next one?
And then there's minutes from July 20th.
What page number, David?
Uh, 27. And it looks like-
That's the article for the town warrant, right?
The July 20th starts off with the negotiations.
Yeah, it starts with the negotiations. There was a morning one that you guys had that I couldn't attend.
It's not 27, then?
Twenty.
Twenty, it's July 20th.
July 20th, page 27.
Page 27. I abstain.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And, is July, what's the next one, 17th maybe?
Uh, let's see. Is it July 20th, executive session?
Yeah, well, I was not.
Yep.
So I have-
July 17th, looks like.
I have page 29?
Yep. Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, do I have, I have May 31st?
Yeah, we got that one too.
You, you have that one? Oh, that's way back now, that's-
That's before me.
Who did approve that one?
Can't-
Need Ann.
We need Ann to do that one.
I'll have to put that one on hold. That's 531. Need Ann.
Anybody else?
Could you make, Mike, could you make a motion pending review by Ann, or does it have to be here?
Has to be here.
Okay.
Is there another one? April 10th, which should be Ann also?
You're not gonna be able to approve those minutes.
That's gonna be one of my questions during the training. During our training, that's gonna be one of my questions. How do we go about getting these approved?
Well, we have to have the three of us here.
But Jackie wasn't there.
Right.
Oh, Jackie wasn't at that one?
On the, on April 10th.
Oh.
I wasn't here. I wasn't on the board then.
No. Oh, we get Jeff's thoughts right now. You're on, we're gonna appoint you, appoint you for one hour. Clear up some old minutes. Uh, any?
You only got two yet.
Yeah, there's, there's only two.
The board has to vote on it.
They gotta have it performed.
I think that's it, isn't it?
Ee, crow.
Is that it?
It's a little question.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna wait for the training on the 11th.
Okay. Yeah. All right, so is there anything else we can do while we're here? Um, we get, is there, what's that, Dave?
This is just a school. There's nothing to enact on that.
And then we have, oh, we have a thing from the highway superintendent to the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development.
Yeah, that's, I need your approval, I'll sign it, but any of your approval to sign it, because that's part of a grant for former road. So after reading it, if there is an agreement, just need a vote, because we need to have a vote, the minutes that you authorized me to sign it.
And it reads, I, Edward Colly here by certified, and I am duly authorized to submit this application on behalf of the town of Southampton to agree and to agree to implement the Mass Works Infrastructure Program requirements on behalf of said municipality. I understand that the information provided in this application will be relied upon by the Commonwealth in deciding whether to make Mass Works infrastructure grant, and that the Commonwealth reserves the right to take action against the applicant or any other beneficiary of the grant if any information provided is inaccurate. Someone make a motion to have-
So moved.
That Ed be allowed to sign and act on our behalf for a Mass Works infrastructure grant? So moved, second anywhere?
Second.
I assume that you were abstaining?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about the letter from Hidden Roofing or not?
Oh, wait a minute, here, oh, this is the original on-
143, at the bottom is where you guys would need to sign, next page.
For the hotels, I wonder if they wanted to take that.
No, I've got it sent to ADCC.
Oh, all right. You gotta sign where the little tag is. Um, we have PVPC discharge greenings for, we have applicant.
I still have not been able to communicate with Laurel fully from Pioneer Valley Planning in regards to exactly what these are, what they're for, the mortification agreement and the discharge of the means.
So then I'm suggested we pass these over until she gets back those?
Wasn't there, I mean, I'm not writing these notes, but weren't they passed through when we first received them?
Like, was.
But we aren't hearing them.
She's not, you have, she's been away, or?
We're just missing each other.
Well, we're not gonna spend them until-
Do you need, you have, on that thing, you just have your signature, there's three more copies. And we also have, this is the bill for the, we have a letter from Bartlett Hackett and Feinberg PC. I assume they're attorneys alone. Doesn't say what they are. This office represents Rockland Trust Company as a secured lender for Newton Contracting Company. This has to do with the roof.
Shoveling the snow off the roof.
Shoveling the snow off the roof, you are right. And it says that we owe them $6,160. Uh, does any, do you have any?
I believe, I was sitting on the board at the time, was highway superintendent at the time, and I explained to them, and I explained to the board that we had some questions on what we'd be in charge for. They shoveled off the wrong side of the roof, and I think at one particular point, I made a recommendation that the board pay half of it, and then it was up to Five Star to deal with the rest.
They were also taking hammers, and I saw them actually, were they, they're taking hammers to the eyes.
But that was a recommendation, and I don't know if it was ever forwarded, I believe it was, I don't have any reason to think it wasn't forwarded to Five Star, and I don't think we've ever heard anything since.
So should we send a letter saying that this would, should be billed to the general contractor?
Well, we had an issue with how I got to that point. I think it was Gary Swanson was here too at the time from the billing committee, that he didn't authorize it, I didn't authorize it, Diane authorized it, and Diane's not here to defend herself. But I think we did come up with a solution to pay for half of it, and they should be responsible for the other half considering they do the job right to begin with. They did the wrong side of the roof.
What's the pledge?
Do you want to ask them to come by and explain the bill?
I don't think they're gonna trek out from Boston to explain a $6,000 bill.
Jeff, do you recall how we finished it?
Now, I can, Ed, to be truthful, for the justice, state regulations are obviously impacted.
No.
Did we send them a letter, do you think, we offered to pay half?
We didn't say anything. So nothing was ever said.
We don't really know.
We had a discussion, I had a fight with them.
Why don't we want to redo that offer and tell them, and we think the work was defective and incomplete, but based on a good faith effort to, to resolve them, and we'll offer them half of it?
Um, I, I wouldn't just sign a letter, I would call them, fight off their will. No sense in sending a letter unless they're gonna be receptive.
Well, the problem is that this has gone through a number of, Rockland Trust is now-
Right.
Newton Roofing is gone, it looks like.
So it sounds like a bankruptcy, so.
Bankruptcy, and Newton Roofing, or Rockland Trust is a secured lender for Newton Contracting.
Or we just wait until our lawyers come and see us.
Motion to take no action?
Would the board agree with that?
Yeah, I agree with it.
It may, it may go away because of the bankruptcy. Um, so next, um-
We need a motion and a second and a-
Well, I guess we're not gonna take any action. Well, if you want to make a motion, yeah, let's make a motion, we'll be clear on the issue. Are we gonna make, someone want to make a motion that we take no action?
I make a motion that we take no action.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, 650 is VHB, not here yet, right?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see him slide in there.
Sorry.
Come on up. Figure you got drowned in the rain.
Can you turn one of those mics around for yourself? The mic's working all right?
Because we moved everything weekly in the classroom. Okay. I just want to introduce John Bouchard. He's been our engineer of record on two projects, the South East, East Street project, and also the Glendale Road Phase Two project from, Glendale Road is from Palmero Meadow to Route 10, and he, he's here to update us on both those projects and where we are, and the next steps we are going to be taking, and some guidance from the board on, on comments.
Thank you. Thank you. I prepared a summary memo that I submitted through the highway superintendent last week, so you'd have it in your package. I'm gonna refer to this and then open to any questions the board might have. VHB has been working with the town on these two projects for a number of years through the Mass Highway Department, now Mass Department of Transportation process. And as part of that design process, it requires the project to be programmed through the Transportation Improvement Program, through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and placed on a regional transportation program, TIP, T.I.P. These projects, the TIP is somewhat constrained, you know, for DOT funds, but through conversations with Mass DOT over the last few months, and getting some support from them on bringing these projects to the next phase of design and permitting through the town, there was some issues that had come up at some of the public hearings in 2009 that they still had on their books that needed some resolution, and they wanted some clarity from the, from the elected officials in town on those, you know, on those positions. Firstly, on the Glendale Road project, the Phase Two begins at the Route 10 intersection and comes up to Palmero Meadow. The original design that was submitted did not include a sidewalk within those project limits to match the cross-section of the portion of Glendale Road from Palmero Meadow to the East Hampton Town Line. And subsequently, at the public hearing, it was discussed and brought by the members of the board and through the highway superintendent that a sidewalk should be added on that segment of the project. We are currently working on the final, or the 75 percent design is the next milestone. It will be making a submittal to Mass DOT and the District Two and Boston offices at the end of this month, maybe the first part of October after we go through some of those issues. We, again, mostly wanted to just get clarity from the board that the project as originally designed and installation of a sidewalk was something that the town was still supportive with the funds, the design funds, or, excuse me, the construction funds that would rebuild this portion of Glendale Road. The project is valued at, you know, one and a half to $2 million and would fit within, you know, the, I guess, the size of projects that they're able to get listed in the next, next few years on that regional tip. So we want to get the process in this fall, so the town can start fighting, I shouldn't say fighting, but should start pursuing the project through the tip again in the spring where they start scoring and evaluating and saying, do these projects really have all the permits in place, the right-of-way in place, and is it a viable, you know, project? So getting up, getting this design completed and submitted in the fall will give them time to complete their review through the early part of the winter, and when the spring programming comes online, the project will be in a position to be favorably, favorably considered by Mass DOT for inclusion with the PVPC tip.
John, before you proceed, can I ask a question?
Sure.
When, when you're talking about the sidewalks, you're talking about sidewalks on, on the road off to the side, or you're talking about it on Palmero Meadow, which?
No, no, this, this would be a sidewalk that would be installed on Glendale Road, connect with the sidewalk on Palmero Meadow, run along Glendale Road to, to up to Route 10, I guess.
Up to, okay.
If I can make a comment at this point, we had the hearing, and we did not have the sidewalk on the plans. The citizens and the abutters came out really pushing for the sidewalk. I don't know what the final, you had a lot of comments for sidewalk, and I don't know if you had any comments against them, but it was overwhelmingly-
We didn't have any comments against sidewalks on the Glendale Road phase, you know, part of the project, you know, of the projects that we're working on on behalf of the town. The, the only constraint that we saw with the project is that Glendale Road was pursued as a low-speed, low-volume criteria roadway, and as such, the cross-section was somewhat narrow. And the portion of Glendale Road that was built, was built with a, you know, narrow shoulder, and when you seek waivers from design standard to build something at that, at that width, you're accepting that, you're accepting the fact that it doesn't necessarily meet the standard, but it meets the characteristics of that particular roadway, and it's going to be safe for motorists, bicyclists, you know, pedestrians. And I think what was, what was at least raised, when you consider the cross-section, you say, well, we want it to be only this wide, but we want sidewalks. The criteria for having the roadway cross-section be, you know, narrowed is typically we're impacting private property, sensitive receptors, wetlands, trees, stone walls, and then when you tackle on the sidewalk, it's a little counterintuitive, you know, intuitive to the, to the application to be low-speed, low-volume, we want it to be narrower. So DOT just kind of puts it back to the community and say, you're sure that this is really what you want, and you, you know, I mean, we heard the abutters' concerns, but we just want to make sure you're on board with this, because, you know, I don't want to scare anyone off, but if there's a, if there's a problem on a town on roadway in the future, if someone were to be hit, or vehicle, you know, were to go off the road, then the town's insurance is actually, you know, part of, there's a concern about the, the liability, and it's the, you know, the town is saying, this is right for our road, for this roadway in our town, this characteristic, and, you know, we're supportive of it. And it's just, the highway department is just saying, okay, now we're gonna add sidewalk, we just want to make sure you guys are on board.
But does the sidewalk actually change the overall cost, which I'm sure it does, and the ability for the project to be picked up?
The sidewalk doesn't pre, wouldn't, wouldn't push the cost beyond the means to, to fund it and program it through that regional tip. It's just that when you, originally when the town applied for a low-speed, low-volume cross-section criteria, it was, we're gonna keep it what's out there now, and because we haven't had a history of accidents, and there wasn't a desire at that time when it was originally programmed to have sidewalks. And then through the public hearing process, which is an important part of, you know, the project we presented with the abutters, and there were several new houses that had been built over, you know, since the project had originally been programmed in the, you know, mid-'90s even. There was a desire by the attendees at the hearing and from the board that we want to, you know, we want to put a sidewalk on here, and highway department, state highway department just wants to make sure that the town understands, okay, we're gonna pursue this, it still fits, but, you know, we're gonna, you know, there's going to be right-of-way required, you know, temporary easements, whatever, that the town's gonna be responsible for. So it kind of starts a little bit of, you know, the ball rolling on that there could be other things that have to be done as a result of adding the sidewalk, and, well, they're just saying-
It's an important issue, I, you know, I'd be in favor myself, especially if the local residents want it in that area. What do you think, Ed?
I went along with John to begin with, but after seeing the, the outpouring of citizens that really wanted it, they wanted it because they had Palmero Meadow and they wanted to continue it.
Right.
And they were hoping the future would turn into Route 10 and be part of it, or there'd be a complete circle. And I think a lot of the citizens out there, there's a lot of new houses out there, and actually, a couple new subdivisions in that area. I, I think the people just want to have more area to walk on. And the other thing too is, it does have increase in flow, in traffic, and it is a good idea to keep pedestrians off the roadway as best we can.
So John, do you need a vote from us, or a notion, a motion from us?
I mean, a record of this meeting and a vote supporting, you know, the installation of the sidewalk that was, would be helpful if, if there's a question later, so we don't have to come back.
Would the Chair entertain a motion?
Certainly would.
I want to make a motion to actually go forward with the sidewalks as requested for the Glendale Road extension, area project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. You know, it might be premature, it's just better to have it on the record now. If there's some concern or question later, they've at least brought it up and said, hey, you know, originally this was low-speed, low-volume, now with the sidewalk, it's going to be a little wider. What other impacts are we impacting, trees, stone walls, and stuff like that, that you are going to, you know, that's going to cause, you know, we might lose some support as a result of those impacts. And, you know, I don't think so. I don't think the impacts of installing the sidewalk, we've at least laid it out preliminarily that there'll be any additional impacts, but it was just something that was raised by the Highway Department to make sure that we had on record that everyone was supportive of it.
You know, in a proper place, it's probably a problem, it's not my zip, is it?
Actually, that's where I think a lot of people would probably go, because of that vista out there, it's pretty nice.
Yeah, but I'm saying that it really impacts their property the most.
Well, the town bought a lot of that property.
And where the barns are?
Yeah. Well, except for the barns. From the barns down to the highway, maybe four, 500 feet is zipped as...
Where the gardens are must be...
Yes.
That's ours.
From that dirt road.
That's theirs.
That's theirs.
The Conservation Commission had also requested a small parking area on town property on that segment, and we're in the process of kind of coordinating with them on some ideas of what we see, so we're, again, not going to impact anything significant and kind of get their buy-in before we finish off the, you know, the design for submittal. So that'll happen very soon. Second project is East Street from, you know, Route 10 to County Road. I've summarized a couple of the comments and issues that were raised at the public hearing. Subsequently, Mass DOT received over 30 written letters, correspondence from abutters within the project limits with a summary of the issues that were raised. Number one, the sidewalks. Number two, the Manhattan River Bridge, tree impacts, safety, and then 25 percent design resubmission comments from Mass DOT. And I'll just go through those briefly. Just for clarity, original design was to include sidewalks on the, on both sides, at least up through the library, and then carry the sidewalk on the, would be the southerly side now?
Library side?
No, on the opposite side from, I'm sorry, that'd be the northerly side, from the library on the opposite, on the opposite side from the library all the way to county. And there was a lot of, you know, a significant amount of comments from Project Abutters due to snow removal and maintenance of sidewalks that they weren't necessarily in favor of installing sidewalks in that section, you know, beyond, say, the, beyond the Manhattan River Bridge. And those comments have come back to us from the District Two office in North Hampton, saying that they were looking for, actually, all four of these items that I summarized, but just that they're looking, again, for clarity from the community that because of the, you know, the number of abutters that were present, that were opposed to the sidewalk, but I think maybe for the wrong reason, that were opposed for installing the sidewalks because of snow removal and maintenance, I don't guess maintenance was an issue, but they felt that snow removal and maintenance was going to fall onto the community or onto the abutters versus the town. And it was at least discussed at the public hearing that snow removal is the responsibility of the abutters, but that maintenance of the sidewalk, it would be a town asset and be handled by, you know, the Highway Department or Highway Superintendent.
Is there any reason why you would cross over to the library? Because in my mind, if you went further down on that side, you could then head up to Clark, you'd be part of Clark Street, and then we'd have the ball fields at Conant Park, and the new ball field is Strong. It would make sense, in my mind, to stay on that side of the road, and at some point maybe get, you know, constant, the community preservation money to put in a footbridge across to tie into Strong. So if you had, you know, kids playing over at Conant Park, and you had kids playing over at the big field on Strong, that they would be able to now be able to walk back and forth and ride their bicycles back and forth, instead of having to cross over east, go down, walk their bikes across the bridge because it's so narrow, and then go back onto Strong. It seemed like it would make more sense to actually stay on the right-hand side of the library. Is that, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I don't think that, and I don't want to dodge the question, but the merit of the location and the limits of the sidewalk, I was here to get clarity from the Board where the Board really felt that sidewalks were needed, because it was, again, let's have library side and non-library side. The limits on the library side were questioned by the Historic Commission as excessive to have two sidewalks. The Town Hall at the time hadn't moved yet, and, you know, we were looking at, you know, providing connection from Route 10 to Town Hall to the library were, made sense. And the, you know, members of the Historic Commission questioned the need for two sidewalks in that segment of the roadway. And, you know, I guess I don't, I don't want to weigh the benefit or the merits of having both sidewalks, just want to make sure that from a cost standpoint and what makes sense is, you know, is being developed in that we don't have one Board in the community or one faction in the community opposed for whatever reason, or supportive of another reason. Because if we go to another public meeting and the Highway Department sees, the State Highway Department sees the lack of clarity on direction, then it raises that issue about, well, the community's, you know, we need something to kind of clarify where you would like this to be. And it may be in deference to the, to one Board or another, but it's just, that's where we're at right now. We have one Board, and the Historic Commission actually has a big say, because we have a historic district, and we need to go through the state permitting agencies, and they're going to weigh in at some time in the future in the final design phase to say, you know, impacts to trees, sidewalks, private property, et cetera. We don't think this needs to be here, and the Historic Commission can, the State Historic Commission can kind of rule on the side of the locals. So we're just, I'm looking for, again, a little bit of clarity from this, you know, the elected officials to say, you know, it's our policy that we want to have a sidewalk within the project limits on this side or the other side, or both sides, or whatever the case may be. And our future plan may be that we're connecting to Clark, and, you know, so you have a reason for doing it, because we'll be able to support the Board and present that case to the environmental permitting agency to say that, you know, this is what the elected officials is thinking of, the, you know, the bigger picture and has a longer-term vision here. And, again, not that the Historic Commission is not knowledgeable about the situation, but they're looking at historical assets and resources and how to minimize impacts. So I think I'm just looking for what the town's position is on that particular issue. Is it...
When you're talking sidewalks, John, you're talking two sidewalks from 10 to the library?
Right.
And a single sidewalk on the north side?
On the north side, from all the way to county.
Okay, so that's the existing plan?
That's the existing plan, and there is a letter on record from the Board, or a previous Board, that was endorsing that plan prior to the public hearing, or, you know, at the public hearing. And, again, it was just, there seemed to be, according to Mass DOT, there seemed to be an abundance of comments from abutters saying, and the Historic Commission, that we don't need two, I don't need it all the way here, I have this large property...
When they say don't need two, up to the library?
Up to the library, that we could get away with one. So I think, again, it's more about getting clarity from this Board of what you want to have the, you know, every project...
Because right now, there is two, there is two up to, at least the Town Hall.
There's currently two up to the library and then the north side up to county. That's where it was laid.
I mean, actually existing today, there's, there's footpaths at least on the north side that goes up at least to Dick Ferrari's house.
Yeah, right.
And then there's on the, on the Town Hall side, there's a sidewalk that goes up to the Town Hall at least.
Up to the Town Hall, right.
So there's two there already, basically. There's two sidewalks on East Street.
Yes.
They don't go the extent to...
They don't go the extent, right.
But there's two sidewalks existing.
I don't even think it goes to Ferrari's.
It gets like a dirt path.
Years ago, there were sidewalks, there were...
What's that?
Years ago, there were sidewalks all the way up to there.
Years ago, yeah. What do you think, Ed? I think one sidewalk would be fine. I don't think it has to do with all the trees.
We've had this discussion.
I know.
And my suggestion is to try to accommodate some of the comments, is to have one sidewalk on the north side from where, like Uncle Fred's is, up to County Road. The current sidewalk, I would have it replaced on the Town Hall side, but have it stopped at the Town Hall. And my other suggestions would be coming into the library to develop some calming, calming effects, either with pavement or with signage, or a combination of both, to slow down traffic, and highlight a sidewalk that can accommodate people to the library more safely than just putting two lines out there.
So why the north side rather than the south side?
We've already designed it that way, and it has less restrictions on it for us, and I think there's more land, am I right, John?
More available land with the town's right-of-way on the northerly side.
Uh-huh.
Wouldn't need to be permanent easements to install a sidewalk on northerly side.
How about the trees and such? How many trees would we...
Well, there are some trees, I mean, they've worked around it, but a lot of those trees, we're suggesting in here from comments from the abutters, that we hire a professional tree expert come in.
Arborist to come in.
Arborist to come in. And I would also recommend that our tree warden go out there with him, because he's echoed a lot of concerns about those trees. A lot of those trees have fallen down in the last four or five years because they're hollowed out and they're getting old. But, you know, I'm not opposed, I'm not, I don't want to just cut these trees down because they're in the way. I think we can work around them. And if we can't work around them and they're sick or they need attention, we need to know that so we can address it. And we need to look at those trees and get an evaluation before we do anything in regards to, you know, where we're going to put the sidewalk, but...
So on the north side from Route 10 all the way to County Road?
Correct. That's my recommendation. That's the recommendation.
Just to be clear, one other comment I want to make on the, on the section through, you know, the historic district and up through the library on the northerly side. We set the sidewalk off of the curb line behind those large trees. So normally, you know, you would have, you know, you might, if there's two different beliefs, you know, on, two different thoughts on sidewalk, one is adjacent to the roadway with a curbing, but that would have really impacted a lot of those trees in the historic district, and understanding that some of them might be in, you know, ill health, we looked at, after meeting with the Historic Commission, putting the sidewalk behind those trees, having a grass or a buffer between the side, between the edge of roadway and the sidewalks, so those trees would have a better environment to thrive if, you know, after we have the arborist come in. So we weren't just kind of putting the blinders on, putting the sidewalk in and take all the trees out. We're cognizant of the, of the importance in, you know, in the historic district and the age of those trees. If they're healthy and, or if they can be saved, then we want to do that. Once we get kind of outside the historic district, the trees that are along, you know, East Street, they're in very wooded areas, it wouldn't be as significant if you, if you lost a row of trees, there's another significant, you know, forested upland kind of behind that. But if, again, if we encountered significant trees that were close to the roadway that we could, you know, accommodate them or save them, then we would do it. But I think really the historic district area, kind of the town, you know, we might call the downtown, from, you know, from the library to Route 10, we were, you know, we were sensitive to that area in saving those trees if possible.
John, there's certain criteria with some of our permitting for MIPA that requires very minimized impact on trees. I don't know if you want to explain that to them, but we have to be very careful about trees.
Right. If we, any project, you know, takes down more than four trees with a diameter at a breast height of about, you know, five to six feet, greater than 14 inches, then those are qualified as significant trees, and the state permitting agency, Mass Environmental, you know, Mass Environmental Policy Act, MIPA, looks kind of down upon us to say, all right, and then we have to replace those on a one or two-to-one ratio. But in, especially in sensitive areas, you know, wetland areas, historic district, we want to be more sensitive to that and trying to avoid that. But then as we, again, go outside the historic district, tree impacts are not as significant because of the, you know, the forested area behind there, we would still be replacing trees at the back of sidewalk, or, you know, however, however, you know, the best environment for them to thrive beyond that. But we do have to quantify and assess those as part of the environmental permitting, the state permitting, anyway.
I just, I called up one of our programs on your computer, and there is currently a sidewalk on the north side of East Street that goes down, one, two, three, four, five, five houses, or five or six houses that's still there. And Ed says you can see the path where the sidewalk has been really abandoned.
Right. And I don't think the sidewalk is in great shape.
No, well, trees are the worst, trees are probably the worst enemy of a sidewalk there is. I mean, they lift them. So it's hard to reconcile putting sidewalks near existing big trees, but...
But I do think just a sidewalk on the north side, then on one side, not two, we don't need two.
Well, and especially when you get, I forget whose house that is, but down by the library, the houses get mighty close to the road. There's very little space between the houses and the...
And then it opens up again.
Yeah. But those few houses there, you take away the sidewalk.
Well, that's on the south side, yeah. And my recommendation is to stop where it is now on the south side.
Right. And go with the north side, single sidewalk all the way to East Street.
Is there, I know, John, you're up on this calming effect, but is there things that we can incorporate in that to slow people down, for pedestrians to cross over?
For the cross, if you wanted to cross them over at the library or at the Town Halls. I mean, there are treatments we can, we can do to the pavement. We can also, you know, look at not only color, but texture, and with handicap ramps or accessibility ramps on either side, and other measures that we've put in as part of, you know, other projects, just completed the Columbia Greenway, or a portion of that down in Westfield, where we're taking the bike path across Shaker Road over near the golf course, and we've incorporated, you know, a rapid flashing beacon, because it's an area that a motorist is not expecting a pedestrian to be in the roadway. And, you know, those are things that we're using in other locations, which are fully fundable and reimbursable, to make sure we're calling them out in an area that needs to, again, may not be an area that you're anticipating a pedestrian, and, you know, use some visual, some light, some color, some texture to try and call that situation. Now, we haven't obviously designed that at this point, but knowing that it's something that, you know, the town is concerned about, it's something we can, we can give some more thought to and come back with some recommendations.
Well, that brings up the issue that we might have a bike path here, right in that same general area, and we have the Manhattan Sanctuary where...
Right.
We'd like people to cross to that, we'd like to cross people probably from the bike path, we'd like to cross them to Clark Street, we'd like to cross them to the library, we'd like to cross them to the Town Hall. So, I mean, what's the speed limit on East Street there?
30.
30?
Yeah, but people?
Yeah, they don't, it's tough.
And they're airborne most of the time because the road's so bad condition, they're not really on the pavement.
Well, even considering that, we are building a new playground, a playground, ball complex on Strong Road, so we might want to look at that, too, and something to, you know, slow people down.
I thought Virginia said that they might be funding a footbridge out of community preservation to get across if you couldn't fix the bridge with a sidewalk. I thought you said something like that about a year ago.
Well, I think there's a sidewalk going to be incorporated into the bridge at some point.
The problem with the, with the bridge over the Manhattan is that it's not, it's not in bad enough shape to qualify for replacement and upgrade. The Highway Department, State Highway Department has, you know, through, Mr. Colley has, you know, called out, we have problems with the crash-tested rails, you know, I have the latest inspection report that was sent to Ed back in February of this year, saying, you know, it's really not much worse, we've got some pictures, it's not going to fall down, and, you know, cosmetics is really all we're going to do, other than we'll incorporate crash-tested rails within, you know, the East Street project. We're going to investigate what it would take structurally and cost-wise to include a sidewalk on that northerly side, so that way we can get across the bridge and see if that would be something that would be funded.
I mean, even if it's, even if we request a variance on the width, a four-foot...
Well, the bridge is not significantly long through that stretch, we might be able to get away with a, with a four-foot sidewalk because of the short length would be one of our recommendations for a variance, otherwise, you know, typically it's five to six feet, so...
But that bridge is a real bottleneck, safety-wise. People coming, going east tend to go too fast, and people coming west tend to go too fast, and it's just enough of a curve that, you know, otherwise the whole project doesn't make sense unless you're going to get people over that bridge safely.
Well, I think, well, you know, the bridge was at least something that the town considered when they originally hired VHB. It's just been clearly presented back to us, to the town, that the bridge is just not eligible, and because it's just not in bad enough shape, which is, you know, unfortunate. They would entertain, you know... They would entertain, you know, the crash-tested rails, we'll look at the, you know, it's, it's possible from a funding standpoint that we could come up with a cost-effective sidewalk railing system. And what happens because of the type of structure, you know, you're replacing a third of the deck on one, on the southerly side while you do the railing, and a third of the deck on the northerly side while you're doing the railing and sidewalk, and you have an eight-foot strip in the middle. And, um, you know, I, I wouldn't, you know, I would think that the town should, should continue to pursue replacement of the entire deck and, and see if we can make it cost-effective and, you know, and get the, the bridge included in the overall scope of the project.
Could you put something together for us?
Yes.
And I think the board would be very much in line with saying, hey, we're going to take two-thirds of the bridge, bridge down to put a, new railings up, and there's only a third left. I think it's, it's about time we consider that money be spent wisely and effectively, and let's finish the job by doing the bridge while we have it under repairs to begin with.
And my only concern is putting the sidewalk on the north side or across the bridge is that you have children then at the end of a hill, there's a blind corner that we're now going to want to cross back over East Street to go down Strong to the ball fields. Whereas if they were already on the south side and they go on the outside of the bridge, they already be on Strong Road. And when you're coming from like Swanson's house down, it's kind of hard to see that corner. That would be a concern.
You know, the sight distance on that side is much lower. On the, on the, on the north side, you have more of a sight distance. You can see further out the road.
Kids flow from Conant Park over to.
There is going to be a blind spot there, and we'll have to take into consideration.
I think that as part of the project, we, we're going to need to do some tree clearing to improve on some sight distance through there, whether there's a sidewalk on both sides or not. I think we need to get, clear some visibility. Mr. Swanson has, you know, on record, you know, written to the highway department about, you know, sight distance coming out of his property, and there's a, you know, there's a little bit of a profile there that we've been asked to investigate and shave, shave that down a little bit to improve on that, you know, that visibility. And, you know, as we get into final design phases, we're, we're going to look at some of those, those items so we can, you know, identify, you know, safety, safety upgrades along the corridor.
Hi. John, but you are going to incorporate, when we talk to, when you, um, to Mass Highway in regards to these railings, that we, minimally, we want these railings replaced with a sidewalk on the north side.
Yes.
But we'd like them to take a serious look at what's left to do with the bridge after we do that.
We're going to put together a, a kind of an alternative plan to say that this is what it's going to, this is what we need to do, take off a third of the bridge. And I'm, you know, I'm kind of summarizing because I think it's, you know, it's seven feet on one side by, you know, structural load, and it's eight and a half on the other, and I think we ended up with about eight feet in the middle or something like that. But we're going to do an alternatives analysis to say that, to do this, here's the cost for the northerly railing and sidewalk, southerly railing, and, you know, here's the middle portion, and put some cost to that, see if we can, we can get it into a reasonable, you know, cost so that they can say, well, jeez, you're right, it does make sense in this alternative to replace the entire bridge might be more cost-effective, and that's what we want to at least include in there and say, look, to replace it all would be this number, and then we'd have staging issues to build it, but it might be more cost-effective to replace the bridge with a, a more modern comparable structure than rehabbing it, and I, and I think that's what we're going to put together at least as a, as a ballpark to begin those discussions. And, you know, we'll, we'll carry that forward, and then we'll come back to the board once we have some better idea on, on some of that stuff.
One of the last questions that we. When this first came, was proposed about three years ago, there was a, some of the local residents on East Street wanted to make it one-way, and I just wanted your opinion on that.
Make the roadway or the bridge?
From like Clark Street over to 10, they wanted to make it one-way. What is your opinion on that?
Well, you know, I haven't looked at it from a traffic circulation standpoint, and that would be one thing that I would, I would look at. What, if it went one-way, what would that cause, you know, what's the, and I, and it's something that could be done, but it, it wasn't something that we, we really explored, because we'd have to look at some circulation, and I, I wouldn't call it a detour, but we'd have to look at circulation, how that would change on that particular piece and, and what, you know, what cost that might, what cost that might incur, but also what the merits of that, would it, would it have, you know, certain percentage of traffic or the volume on East Street now using Clark or Strong or, you know, rerouting around that? And those are things that we can't always evaluate the, the effects on other properties, because when you, you do that, you have to really come up with a circulation plan, present that to all of the parties, so that way the folks on Strong and Clark and, and any other, you know, connecting roadways, that they may now experience a, an increase in traffic, and does that roadway really meet the criteria for the volume? You know, there's a few different things. So we did not explore that at, you know, up to this point, anyway.
Okay, thank you. The chief, chief of police is here. Is there anything, Dave, you need as far as enforcement that you'd like to see up there that, not there now, enforcement issues as far as signage and, um, anything you need in the future, would like to see?
East Street in general or the bridge?
East Street in general.
Nothing at the moment, but we can talk about that.
Oh, he's here. Can we talk about it now, or?
I wasn't prepared to come in and answer that. So I haven't given it any consideration.
Any issues on East Street regarding the bridge?
Weight issues. We've got to post it now, but we've had a history of a lot of overweight trucks building the bridge.
Why is the weight number on the bridge?
I think it's 28,000 for.
That's the maximum, right?
Dual maximum.
Yeah, but I think the smaller trucks were like eight, 10 tons?
I think it's eight, sixteen.
And 20 something.
It's a very low rating.
We can barely put a school bus over it. You can't, you can't put a school bus over at Tech Creek.
If a furniture truck.
Well, would that help our case to support a new bridges, the fact that?
Well, the weights are there, but it's not that they, they're going to change it. They reduced the rates about 35 years ago, and they haven't, about 30 years ago, and they haven't changed them since. But they're saying the bridge is not of a.
What I'm saying, when they're, they're doing a cost-benefit analysis on repairing it, can we say that the?
Yeah, you can.
That we have trouble with getting safely, getting school buses across because of weight restrictions?
Weight restrictions.
And the fact that?
I think we've talked about it, but it's not, it doesn't hurt to put that in again.
It's hampering the commercial flow of traffic in town because the trucks can't make the commute?
Well, it's doing that, too.
Well, trucks go over anyways, right?
Not unless there's, if there's a police car there, they don't.
Which then sends them.
Then they start backing up, creating more of a problem.
Well, then they, they hook down.
Strong?
Strong, go that way.
Any accidents of note?
Have you seen any accidents of note along the, the bridge area, pedestrians or?
No. No, there's really not much pedestrian traffic on East Street anymore.
John, anything else?
Increase significantly in the sidewalk.
John, anything else you need from us?
Uh, no, the only thing, uh, just, just for clarity, we, we're going to draft a letter addressing the, the items in my memo for the board to modify as you see fit, and then send it to the highway department, state highway department, just to clarify some of those issues, and, and we'll have a draft to Mr. Colley within the next few weeks. I've already started some of the items, but I wanted to hear the input tonight so I could finalize it, and then we'll get it to him for.
Do you need copies of our minutes?
What's that?
Do you need copies of our minutes?
Um, copy, copy of the minutes to attach would, you know, something that, that couldn't hurt, again, that, that these were the items that were discussed and, and how the, how the board voted to move forward.
Did, do you need a motion?
Do we want to take that, somebody want to make that motion? To move forward with the, to move forward with the reconstruction of East Street, hopefully to include the bridge over the Manhand or a bridge too far, and, uh, construction of sidewalks along the north shoulder as a matter of necessity.
Right. I'll, like I said, I'll draft a letter which discusses the points we talked about in editable form, so that way if they were, uh, would wanted to clarify or, or, you know, reword anything that I may have misinterpreted, then it can, it can send that on Town Let Ahead to, you know, to Mass Highway Department.
Somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you very much, John. Anything else?
Thanks, John.
No, thank you very much for your time.
We'll be hearing from you at some point, then? Any particular timeframe on all this?
At some point, sure. Now, we'll, um, within the next two or three weeks, we'll have a draft letter through Mr. Colley to the board, and as I said, we're anticipating submitting the 75% design for Glendale Road by, you know, end of the month, first part of, of October. So submit, you know, we'll coordinate through Mr. Colley and then have copies of those documents with him, and, and then at any time the board needs an update, we'll be happy to come back.
John, just so they understand, the 75% plans really represent almost 100%.
Yeah, 90% design plan, you know, 75% submission is, is kind of a milestone that Mass DOT uses, and what that says is the design is sufficiently developed that the town would be able to acquire, stock to acquire any necessary right-of-way, we can move through permitting, local and state permitting, and the plans are essentially 90% complete, there's, you know, some dot in the i's and cross in the t's, and doing like the final, final, final estimate, but we'll have a construction cost estimate at that time as well with, because of, you know, some unknowns at that point, it'll have a contingency, contingency factor to it. And then we'll, we'll look at 100% and probably, you know, after the winter review by DOT, and if anything comes back that's, surprises us, you know, we'll, we'll schedule a meeting with them to resolve those issues.
I think we need a call for a vote.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Um, we're running a little late, but what's next on the agenda, which was scheduled for 7:10 is executive session with the Police Union, Officer Union, and 7:35 is Police Dispatch. I suggest that we, um, go into open session for both of those purposes under Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 3, and that we will be coming back out into regular session. Says at 8 o'clock, which hopefully we'll make, but maybe we won't? We will? Okay, we have assurances from the union that we will. So we will be going back into open session, hopefully before 8 o'clock. Move to go into executive session, if there is such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, by roll call.